Good afternoon, this is the City Council meeting conducted by the City of the Whole Four, Thursday, June 6, 2014. Thank you, Mr. Seiber.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Lance. Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. Patacass.
Yes.
Ms. Jordan. Yes. Your other members present. All right, before we start our agenda, we understand there's some good news coming from the council.
Yes, we heard today, this morning, that the nonprofit housing board has received the tax credits for both McDonald Towers and River Park Place.
Wow.
This, it's a huge, it'll result in a huge federal investment in these buildings. And helping us get that financing was the approval of the bid for the River Park Place complex. And it looks, also looks like the process will be speeded up because we'll probably go with a Freddie Mac mortgage, and that'll take five months out of the process.
Okay, we've got a Freddie lifting in our agenda today.
And what I wanted to do is, I prepared a PowerPoint, very brief, just highlighting. We originally, as we started this exercise, one of my objectives was to develop, bring in department organizational charts, and we weren't able to get those into the PowerPoint, but we do have a packet of organizational charts. So I'd like to quickly go through, there's only about five or six slides, and then a number of handouts, and at various points, so we stopped the PowerPoint presentation and go to now, I'm going to probably choose the mic. The first page we have is in your gradebook on the executive summary. In my communication to council, I indicated this budget process that we're using mimics and mirrors what we've done in other years. As I said to council at your last meeting, we are working within the constraints of our existing E system. I explained to you some of my frustration over the columns, the restrictions to the number of columns in that. We have had a conversation with E in the next few weeks, we will be meeting with them, and looking at other ways to develop a module that on one page by department will show revenues, summaries, expenditure summaries, be able to look at possibly adding about three to four more columns. So when we started with this software, we bought a canned product, and we need to probably just do a little customization. So that was the conversation. And my thought process is that we would look back at the last three previous fiscal years, where you're at to date in the current fiscal year, the department heads' recommendation, the administration's recommendation, the mayor's and the council. And if you look at the green, particularly the yellow sheets, you don't have the department heads' recommendations, the mayor and the administration has been merged, and the last column is the council's recommendation. And that is a limitation of the software, but we will work to get that resolved. The documents that we handed out that were distributed were similar to what you have before. We separated the blue sheets. The green sheets are your revenue, summaries, your green, yellow sheets are your expenditures, your blue sheets are the personnel sheets. In a few minutes, we'll pass out the organization charts. Want to, as I said, the budget pretty much mimics what we have. This was in the transmittal document, and the budget, the proposed budget for general fund is sixty-six point seven eight, six million. Next slide, I shouldn't have pulled. Wanted, there've been a number of questions as going through this. There are positions that have not been funded, and when you look at the org charts, you'll see positions funded. For example, the city administrator and the deputies positions are still in admin. So what you're looking at this list, and in the blue sheets, these are positions that previously were not funded, and we're now recommending that they be funded for the 2014 budget. General fund, an accounting, one payroll specialist. Building department, a clerk typist, two, and a clerk and administrative assistant. In O M B, the financial services director, that previously was not funded, we're proposing in this budget that it be funded. Police department, and this is consistent with what the council approved, I believe was December fifteenth or sixteenth of last year. Eight officers, six cadets, and two public safety dispatchers. Technology service, a help desk assistant, a network engineer, and in the treasurer's office, two tax clerks to help out with the cash-receiving functions of that office. In other funds, in cable, a non-general fund, we're proposing to bring in another producer-director and a secretary, two. And I believe, Karen helped me out, the secretary, two, that was a part-timer, Lauren?
Point three quarters.
Point three quarters. Motor pool, we have, right now, we have posted the supervisor's position. A communications technician, that is the person who retrofits our vehicles and cars with radios, the new ambulances that'll be coming, we've had some vacancies there. That position was previously unfunded, and it needs to be built. Then a fleet technician. Water and sewer, we're proposing an additional clerk again, a non-general fund, and this is consistent with the recommendation that we had in front of the finance committee in mid-February. Eight maintenance workers, one mechanic who will be assigned to motor pool to work on water vehicles. It's a way to help that internal service fund out. Want to just touch on capital projects. The proposed capital projects, Beechwood Pro Shop, ten thousand dollars, replace the roof. The Coathouse, ten thousand dollars. Later on, under a slide called Other Topics, I think there are a number of pieces of real estate, I think the council, the administration needs to come back and make, develop a disposition strategy of some sort. Coathouse is one of those properties. Repair and replace spot concrete civic center complex, that's fifteen thousand. As a note, there is sixty thousand budgeted in this current year to do concrete replacement work on this campus here. Repair at the Berg site exterior, we annually have been putting in twenty-five thousand a year. Renovation, completion of fire station, two kitchen, thirty thousand. Upgrade motor pool heating system, forty thousand. Repair Beechwood's exterior, a hundred thousand. Replace and public services building, the roof there, a hundred and sixty thousand. Informational electronic signage, civic center and Beechwood, two hundred thousand. Replace boilers, air handlers, and condensers at the sports arena, two hundred thousand. Replace the roof on Parks and Rec building, two hundred and seven thousand. Replace partial roof at the sports arena, three hundred and sixty, two thousand, five The facilities fund is an internal service fund, with various departments within this budget, for example, the signs, we're proposing out of cable, two hundred thousand, going into cable for the electronic signs. Six hundred thousand is coming out of Parks and Rec, primarily for improvements to their facilities, and that is within the detail of the Parks and Rec budget on the yellow And we can go, did anyone, you know, I'm sorry, Madam President, if people want to ask questions, or?
I think since we're on this point, we should probably go ahead and ask questions.
Okay. Do you want, we can go back?
Well, let's go back to the, well, let's do the first name.
Okay. Proposed infrastructure capital projects, we, well, this is one I just went through. But this is what our facilities, the maintenance group will be doing. These projects will be assigned to the Southfield Building Authority, and they'll be projects that they undertake on behalf of council in the next fiscal year.
Okay. No questions. I'm interested.
Yeah. But you hit, you hit, we'll have all this on, so they can follow you, those of us that can't see it. I know that, but he's not following, he's not following as it's, as it's.
Well, you know what? I can give it to you.
I got two.
I got, I got fifteen paper copies, proposed capital projects, all.
Well, I got two.
Do you want to just circulate that?
I got two.
What, what you have there?
This morning.
I'm sorry.
I thought that this morning's would have everything with the mayors.
Each of these slides are on the single piece of paper. It's also in the packet, but I wanted to circulate it again.
We had two, one does not have.
This packet's done from, that we got yesterday.
One has administrator, I got two of them. One has administrator's letter in it, the other one does not.
Okay.
So what is, is that, both the mayors and the other one the administration, and I guess they're trying to figure out.
The mayor, it's the one from the mayor. But the one we're handing you right now is the same document, just put on a legal size, all three, one sheet. If, and you'll see, we're proposing total capital improvements of the twenty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. The first group is to our facilities and properties. The next group is streets. And the next group is water and sewer.
This one, we've got, this is in this one. Okay.
Yeah, and the major streets? Yes. On the Mill and undercut Nine Mile Road from Beech Hill with the telegraph? Yes. That's also on the, the plan for 2015? It is scheduled to start next spring, summer, but from a budgeting standpoint, our local match is within this year's budget. Do we really want to spend money out there in the metro roads for the following year? No, actually, this is the Beech Two Telegraph, this is the project that's on the road list, it's just putting the funding in place. But it doesn't show about the third lane?
We talked earlier, years ago, about adding a third lane to Nine Mile.
Right. Well, you talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. Talked about a lot.
Yeah. I could tell you, this project has funding from the Federal Aid Committee. I do not, I would need to check what we showed to see if we are in fact adding a turn lane to that. Well, somebody was talking about it at one of our meetings. And one of, one of the concerns that I have is, and I don't know if they're accustomed to it now or not, but a few years ago, I was talking with one of the firefighters, and they were saying that the two lanes on Nine Mile Road are not the same size, and they have to be real careful when they're driving down one side, and I don't know if it's the eastbound lane or the westbound lane, that the truck just barely fits on the road, so that if they have any, you know, if they want to stay away from the shoulder, they're actually encountering on the yellow line. So I don't know. Here's, here's what I'm comfortable saying to that, if you recall what we went through with Inster Road when the road had us widening it, because these are federal aid dollars going through the federal aid committee, that road will need a standard width, so if there's something with the lane widths that are off, it will be fixed in the same fashion that Inster Road was. Remember how we had to add, I think we added six feet to each side when we did Inster? Yeah. Nine Mile Road will have to meet the same Federal Highway Administration standards as part of the project. Oh. I was hoping that the third lane would help solve that problem, because when we widened it, we would make sure that the lanes are all the same size, but I don't see it. I'm not. Well, I something to be, something to check out. And I'm not sure we're through all of the engineering on it. I would be shocked, because for a project that's going to start next, you know, spring of 2015, we're probably, this fall, will be going through the engineering on it. I would say anything like your, your turn lanes, where you do have turn lanes, your stacking distances and all of that, will have to go through a planning process, and will have to be in compliance with Federal Highway Administration. But I, I don't know if we're adding a turn lane to the whole thing, and we can check that out. Okay. And I'm going to ask Jeremy's question.
I got it.
Why is the thirteen mile from twelve mile to thirteen mile still on there? I mean, Evergreen Road, from twelve to thirteen mile? Because we have a commitment from the feds on that road. Boy, I, you know, about a couple, three years ago, when the government came out with, with money that they wanted to give to the states for doing things, there are some states that said, you know, we don't need it, because what we've got is better than what we're going to do. I don't know if we can turn this down without jeopardizing future money or not, but I just don't understand how that got on, on the list.
Can we just move it up the road?
The, the federal aid committee doesn't quite work that way. However, I, I, we did recently have a very interesting conversation about the Northwestern Service Drive, eight to nine mile, about horse trading. You know, if I've got funding, why wouldn't you let me trade? The committee did not warm up too, too well to the concept of, you know, there the concept was, allow us to preserve that funding and put it on another project, one of our service drives along the freeway, and allow us to advance that and bid the project not pursuant to federal aid standards, which would have allowed us to get the bid out this year. And they, they really didn't warm up. They said, if you, you know, I don't, we won't be penalized, we'll just be giving those federal dollars back. So, you know, I'm happy to bring a representative in from Oakland County Road Commission in, and let this be a topic of a study session. Actually, what we should do is bring somebody in that has authority to make some decisions and drive the road, and say, explain to us why this is on the list. And I, I believe their response is going to be, because we want to preserve it before it gets worse by making this investment, and, while the worst gets worse. We will bring them in, and, and I'm even happy to schedule, we'll schedule them in, and we'll do a tour like we did a year ago on Evergreen. That's very insightful.
I got to see the money on Greenfield.
Oh, yeah.
Harper Greenfield, as John had pointed out.
Well, and now, I will tell you, the county would probably like a Greenfield, because that's their obligation. That shifts, you know, the, there's under seventeen million dollars a year going through a highly competitive process. There's typically one four-hour job, complete reconstruction, one, and the rest are three-hour jobs, mill and resurfaces. That, the list of what people are asking for is ten times the amount of funding that's available. And I'm convinced that if there were more money available, the list would grow, because there are communities that don't submit. So, and, and I would argue, you know, for example, Eleven Mile, which is being done this year, twenty-three hundred feet east of Inster Road, when we submitted that project going back in '09, the road wasn't in the condition it is in today. So here it is, we've waited, now we're looking at another five to six hundred thousand dollars in repair to do that job correctly. Yeah, I guess. And you let me also say this, we may adopt a budget out of sixteen, but there's no reason why, before we pull the trigger, we can come back, and I, I, I believe a budget's a living document, and we may have to make amendments. Mr. Pierce and I have talked, I'm not opposed to doing, you know, amendments on a monthly basis if we're meeting twice a month, if we're aware of certain things that are happening. I do, I do have one other question that I forgot about. It's a different area, and I didn't see any money in there about upgrading the pavilion. You know, the, and I don't know if that comes out of Parks and Rec's budget, or if it comes out of facilities budget, but, you know, the carpeting out there is, needs to be redone, and I think periodically the moving walls have, have problems. So, somebody needs to take a look at that. We can certainly take a look at the pavilion. Internally, I think council, where the sixteenths are going to take action with three hundred thousand in ADA improvements. There is a discussion going on with HUD about doing a 108 loan, where we would borrow against our future CDBG allocations, and a lot of that would be for addressing ADA, and part of that is the ADA restrooms. And I think the pavilion, the discussions that I've had with Doug Block, as well as a couple of the board members of Parks and Rec, the pavilion, the library auditorium, the library meeting room, and the Berg, all have, have to be reviewed as to how we handle and manage the renting, rentals of those. And we may want to explore, you know, some type of alternative way of managing those facilities. I think everyone who's in this room would love to see that all of those facilities have greater use. Right. And I, you know, there's even been some discussion, and at the right time, the conversation with council, naming rights on the pavilion, different things might need to be explored. And those, those mechanisms, a better business plan and a better pro forma may be what help us pay for new carpet. I think the wall repair is over a six hundred thousand dollar item, if I remember correctly. A way to capitalize those expenses and maybe shift the burden onto another entity. And I, I'm going to use this as, the next council, at Monday night's meeting, you're going to see the Miracle League and their restroom. That's a great example of how working together in a collaborative relationship, we have an obligation to have ADA restrooms on this campus. How we're getting two ADA restrooms put in there without Parks and Rec, having to pay for it, that our residents can use when they play handball, tennis. You know, so, you know, I, I think we've got to look at different and more creative ways. Thanks.
Yeah, just a few more comments on, on Evergreen Road from twelve to thirteen mile, I'm glad that Meyer asked the question. You know, so this, just so I'm, it's very clear, this is a part of the city's match to federal funding, correct?
That is correct.
That a hundred thousand dollars can only go toward road maintenance and some other aspect, let's say we give up the rest of the federal funding, we still have that a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, you are correct.
It has to go somewhere else. I mean, I would rather give up the funding for the rest of the project, because there, even if it's a hundred thousand dollars for next year's cold patch, or, which was, we ran out this past winter, a hundred thousand dollars should be shifted toward there. I can't, I really can't justify, it, because we're going to get the heat for, for investing in a road that's in good condition, while roads around the city are absolutely crumbling. And, and it just, I can't, it's, put that a hundred thousand dollar match, even if it's just a fraction of the project, even if the whole project goes forward, we're going to get the heat from it. Even if they were, you know, it's just, it's something, we got to figure out who we can talk to to ship the funding. If we can't ship the funding, I'd still like to see that hundred, a hundred thousand dollars go, go toward patching materials for next winter.
I don't disagree. Let me, on Monday night, we're, we're actually preparing a council item for emergency cold patch, or, I'm sorry, emergency hot asphalt, where we go out and cut and concrete patch replacement. We're proposing another half million dollars into both contracts. This hundred thousand, you are correct, could go towards that?
Yeah.
I just don't want to give up, I want to try to get the county to recognize, allow, give us some fungibility on those funds, allow us to use it for another project before we throw in the towel.
I'm absolutely okay with going through that strategy first, and if you want to bring someone back to this council, we could go on a road tour, and really just, I, I really don't even think that these road commissioners know what's going on in the southern end of our city. They can't possibly, it is, it is unacceptable that we live in one of the richest counties in the country, and the road conditions on Greenfield, the Northwestern Highway Service Drive, is just third-world condition. And if we're going to be investing in a road that really, you wouldn't know, I, it says poor on the chart, you wouldn't know the difference between a poor road and a good road then, as a poor road. I can't justify spending a nickel on that road. And if we can put money into elsewhere, I'm okay with going through that strategy, but if they say no, I'd still rather see a hundred thousand dollars go into patching material for other roads in the city.
You know, I'm listening to the conversation, and I think that we're not getting down to really a policy, and, and the policy is that, you know, most of the roads that majors and secondary are all county and state. And, and when they, when they set calendar on those roads, we have to participate, whether it be ten percent or twenty percent, whatever it is to match, and so really you don't have any discretion on, on that money. You must have the money available when they, when they decide to do a road. And, and you have little say in them, like Telegraph Road, like we got asphalt and they got concrete noise, you know, you'll never know. But we had no input on that, even though we are participating. Well, then you get back into, they think, if you have your own money, then you can do what you want with it. And, and then, you know, you take your hundred thousand, and if that's what you have, and you go put it in some of the roads. But then you have to say, do you want to pursue those dollars that are available for projects because they fit the, they, they, the plan, so to speak, and, or don't you? And, and so, then it has to go through transportation SIMC, then go through that, and they go through these, you know, I mean, there's no, if they would just give us X amount of dollars a year, and say, you know, come, come, here's your percentage of money, we spend it where you need it. But that's not what happens, you become, you know, hungry, and by taking some of these grants, you're expanding the life of whatever you're fixing, which saves you money down the road. And, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the time would come, and Evergreen Road needs it, then there may not be federal money to state monies or county monies available. Then it becomes a hundred percent of your problem. So, so the policy, I guess, is, is that, you know, do you go after grants, or don't you go after grants? You know, I believe in going after grants, because, because it, it saves you in your pocketbook, and even though it doesn't need, with today, there's an amount of lifetime on these asphalt roads, like Evergreen, and before that comes back in the cycle, you know, they could be tore up, and you may need more than a hundred thousand dollars to, to take care of it. So, so I think, I think our roads need a real workout, Fred, if we get an understanding of what all these grants are, when they're available, what, what's, how are they on the calendar, what's it going to cost the city as a participant, a city roads, are they going to go after grants for those, and if you get the grants, do you have the right to put it where the most needed to be? And, and I think that, and I think that's what we're really missing with this whole thing. And I, I agree with Jerry, you know, but, but a hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't go anywhere, Jeremy. A hundred thousand dollars is nothing. It really is. When you're talking about a road project, you're talking about nothing.
There is a disconnect, and let me tell you where the, if you recall when we showed you the map of roads that are. that are eligible for federal aid, those are the roads that are going through. The disconnect, and, and here it is. This submittal started in oh nine or, or twenty ten for this stretch of Evergreen, kind of looking in the future. The administration needs to have our engineering department bring these nominated, these projects as they're nominated, to council for some type of rating and prioritize. That's the, the administrative disconnect. There are not a lot of Southfield roads that are eligible for federal aid. Oh, as, 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 you brought this up a month ago, in hearing how, why this rode over other roads. I think that's what the administration, working with our engineers, can do a better job at, and saying to council, before we nominate these sites, you know, is this your concurrence? And let us say to you why we nominated this, and it's a combination of the cost, the road rating, and all of these other things. The initial process that SEMCAG eventually approves starts with staff nominating, and it's a peer review. Uh, right now, Southfield does not even have a vote on this federal aid committee. The large committee right now, I think, is Barrington Hills, Royal Oak, and another, one of the townships. That voting process is a rotated voting process, and this is at the federal.
How do we get a, we got the same?
Well, it, it rotates. Uh, it's, it's been, it's been in this way in Oakland County for years. I will tell you, having worked in Wayne County, it's a much more equitable distribution of limited road dollars than the, what goes on in, in, in Wayne County relative to who gets what money. So this is formula-driven, competitive, and, and a peer review. There was a period where one seer at city was over-reining its roads on their severity, and they were penalized in the peer review process for doing that. And I saw, I witnessed that in two thousand and eleven, sitting in the committee meetings. So, what I, you know, what we will commit to council on future nominations is we will bring them to you so you can see what it is we're nominating and why. Because at, at the end of the day, if you folks can't justify it, I, I, I can see what you're going to hear, because I, I do agree, if I could spend a million and a half dollars along a service drive to settle on this project, it makes more sense.
So that, I want to jump in. There's, there, we have to have some conversation, and I, I know this is a living, breathing document. If we have to budget for it because time is of the essence, that's fine. Of course, I'm going to vote for the city budget, not going to hold it up over this project. But we have to have a meeting with the key decision maker and have a visual over the condition of one road or the, and the condition of another road, and say, we just want to shift the funding from one area in the city to another.
What, and, and in the budget, I'm certainly here to be making a note. We can put in there that this project doesn't proceed without that happening in the resolution. I mean, you know, I, I, I think this is a good conversation.
Yeah.
I, I can't tell you I'm not in disagreement when I ride the road. So, um, but it's unfortunate it has somehow gotten this far, and it's, there's federal funds to do it.
Yeah.
You know, Jerry, we have to have, you know, that's what, and I think we've discussed it all ourselves, is we have to get somebody from the state, the county, and the feds, and to coordinate, you know, our roadmap, so to speak, so that we're all talking about how can you get the city back contract, to get the tourist roads done first, and coordinate it. Because the way it's doing now is the pie in the sky, they sold the money in, and really, you have no opportunity to really grade your roads and say, okay, I want to, here's a sequence of my roads, and, and this won't be have to get done, because that command is sold one over here, it's sold one over here. And, and it really doesn't make sense, the way it's being done.
Yeah.
Mira. Yeah. We know that to make the, the BURG centers viable, we needed to rehab the kitchens. Is that in another budget, or, or we're not doing it?
The, uh, to, to rehab, I'm sorry, the BURG?
Yes, the kitchen.
The kitchen.
And that?
We are actually, we, it's not in this year's budget. However, we have had, um, three weeks ago, we had a two-hour meeting on site. We've got a crew working on it. Last week, there was a crew that went out to, um, a place of a Glen meet or some.
Oh, Glen meet, Glen meet.
And they're looking at other comparable facilities. Um, I know they've had a catering entity review the kitchen, uh, facilities is putting numbers together. But that, that meeting only happened in mid-May. Uh, so we actually have a group working on the BURG. Last Friday, uh, we had, uh, through our facilities group, we're completing some of the energy analysis. Uh, the, the furnaces and air conditioning units are of an age that most of them could pay for themselves within two to three years through energy savings. Um, so we've got a SWAT team consisting of facilities and Parks and Rec. We walked both properties, and that is a, a site we will be coming back to, to council with. And I, I believe last Thursday, they were at that other facility touring.
I, I wanted to go back to the pavilion and the, and the BURG kitchen. These are possible revenue generators, and I think they should have a priority when we're investing in capital, capital projects. We need to, to focus on generating revenue for this city. And I know that we need to keep our firefighters' kitchens up to date. The roofs, I guess, you have to replace roofs. And most of these are repairing roofs. The exterior of the BURG site, what are we actually talking about?
The exterior, um, is trying to, to address a, a stronger presence, clean up some of it as you come in the building, and just create more of a wow factor in that facility.
So, if, if, if you may, my question then goes back to who's actually going to be in the BURG center? How are we going to do this? So here we are, we're allocating funds, and I haven't really heard a real strong plan by administration of who's actually going to be there? How are we going to maximize using that space? Because we can fix it up and it can look good, but at the end of the day, how is that, how is that facility actually being used? And that may not be a question for now, but when we're looking at capital projects, um, and I think Councilman Focasi was hitting on something that I can start. How does that tie in to the overall picture? So when I get back to the Beechwood exterior, boy, do I know they need it. But we just put a lot of money into the BURG center, and we're not fixing the kitchen, which the kitchen would allow us to rent it out more and have more, um, to generate revenue. Uh, the bathrooms at the, um, BURG center are very old and tired. Uh, and all these things play into when you're trying to rent the facility out. The, um, the gazebo need some attention. And so when you just say exterior, it's very vague. And then we have that house sitting there that, that needs painting again. And it's sitting right in front of it, and it's, the, the paint and everything is falling apart on that. I have a concern when we just say exterior, because then when you say that, then we walk by and say, well, why did they do that? Why didn't they do something else?
The twenty-five thousand dollar line item has been an annual line item in the BURG for routine maintenance. A lot of it's painting and that. So what I'm hearing is you want to prioritize how that money is going to be spent. Let me also remind you that within the CDPG, I don't have the numbers, but I think we had another line item under historic preservation. Um, and we were looking at, that's where I was hoping to pay for some of your HVAC, your heating and your AC upgrades there. But I, I agree, we need, we need a solid master plan for this site. And in my mind, it may include, you know, part of the building to be put under private management. There are, there are a number of entities that manage these private chapels and, you know, wedding sites. It may be an excellent entrepreneurial opportunity for, for the right person.
And, you know, I'll say it again to the council, I had had dialogues with the community house in Birmingham, and they were interested in actually looking at this site to being the Southfield Community House, and that they would manage it like they do the Birmingham. And I think that would be awesome. It, it, we know that the community center in Birmingham has had a stellar reputations and presence in Birmingham, and they actually came out and looked at that house. Um, and I would like for us to have that conversation again, and to have the, the Southfield Community House. And with their experience and leadership of managing that, I think it would be phenomenal. The, the other thing, the BURG, I mean, the pavilion, do we have a commitment of when those restrooms are going to be done? Or is it still just a concept?
There's, there's no commitment. I'm, uh, the, we've got budget numbers of the restrooms. There is some thought, though, um, and I, I, I think we have the senior center at McDowell Towers. One lease has expired. The Southfield nonprofit needs to work out some of the items that they're working on. You heard their good news. Um, there has been some thought. The senior center at McDowell Towers runs Parks and Rec about a hundred sixty thousand a year. It takes some of that savings, perhaps it's a LURF, five years, and we look at doing some of the renovation. When we, to speak about HUD and the one oh eight loan, part of that, I had, right now, we have a one point seven million dollar budget for ADA improvements for this campus. And when we speak about the one oh eight loan, that's the type of investment we're looking at. We're going to put a three hundred thousand dollar down payment towards that. The council approves what's in front of them on the sixteenth. So the rest, the restrooms, the thought process is with Doug Block's office and the office just to the west would be renovated and become ADA accessible restrooms, something along the same caliber as when you go to, um, they call themselves Suburban Collection now, you know, what you see in a hill from, uh, uh, you know, very high-end looking restroom, you know, probably wood marble, uh, in, in, in that restroom. We've not completed, we don't have permanent funding. I believe that the, those restrooms are tied to both the ADA and how the senior center eventually gets handled.
Can we participate in that program where we as a city get the, commit the loans from that organization for energy investment?
Pace.
Pace. Can we do that instead of doing that loan where we are allowed to pay it back at the rate of reduction of energy?
Well, the, the concept would be there is where we, we would calculate our energy savings and use our energy savings to pay that back.
Can we participate?
Well, we could structure something that works, uh, the same fashion. It would mean, there are a number of communities within their, community, within their energy block grant that took the energy savings and played it forward. We took the energy savings and allowed it to benefit our general fund. Had we taken the energy savings from the new boilers that were put in, you'd probably have a large amount of money going in. The new, and I'll use, for example, the new parking, the new lights that, the luminaires that were put in. Those pay for themselves in two years. You know, if you were to take future energy savings and put that into kitty, you could pay, play that back. We took the savings and used it to reduce our facility operating, our matrix costs, to help the library out, to help the general fund, and Parks and Rec. We could certainly move in that structure where we're using our energy savings to pay and help capitalize other improvements. That's in essence what the FACE program is.
Yeah. I just, I just think that we should look at revenue, and we know that those are two places. And we keep pushing it back. We've talked about the great concept of fixing those bathrooms. I don't know if any of you ever come over here, we have those conventions or whatever. Those rooms are horrible. I mean, the stench, um, it, they're small, they're antiquated, we really, because there's no ventilation. And when you have a thousand people here and all using those bathrooms, it's unacceptable. And we need to put a priority on it. And I don't really want to hear a concept anymore. I want to hear what are we going to do and have some expectation.
We could certainly move forward if it's his body's, uh, desire to take a large, you know, a large amount of Parks and Rec fund balance. And we, we could certainly move, move that, that forward, and, um, we, you know, we could, we could bring it, you know, within a month afterwards. I know we've got preliminary numbers. Uh, my biggest, our biggest challenge right now is we're out of contract with our architect. Architect bids are out, uh, will soon be out on the street. We'll need to select an architect again. But we do have concepts and preliminary numbers to move with both those restroom concepts.
I spent a lot of time at the BURG lately, because historical pride has had a number of programs over there. School tours and two programs and the church and so on. And I completely agree with you about the kitchen. That kitchen has been way too long. So my, my question is, before we spend community development block grant money over there, can we, can we take some of that to the kitchen?
Yeah, um, we, we probably, as part of the historical preservation, and that's a line item, and that is a historical district, we probably can. So, and, and my, my first thought was to address some of these thirty and forty-year-old furnaces. I mean, you are aware of what, the damage we suffered this past winter when one went out.
Well, the bathrooms are not bad. They weren't fixed because the pipes broke in the church. But the gazebo floor has sunk. It's plastic, and it, it now has dropped, and it's uneven, um, probably from settling. Uh, it's not a wooden floor, it's a cement. I noticed that yesterday.
The gazebo floor?
The gazebo floor, yeah, it is, uh, something, but, um, structurally otherwise, the gazebo seems fine, uh, but the floor is too much wood. And then, um, you know, the other thing is, um.
And that needs to be addressed, because people rent that place and they're waiting, and they're all, they don't pay anything.
Yeah. The other thing is, and I know, Fred, I think you mentioned this to me before, that the museum needs to be air-conditioned for the protection of the collection that's there. And I don't know if any of you have been in the museum lately, but it is night and day difference from, you know, what it was. It's been really, really, a whole number of volunteers have worked on making that, it's got a presence now. So, just a little feedback, um, I've spent hours up there lately.
Thank you. Uh, I want to go back to the issue of the bathrooms in the Parks and Rec building. I presume you're talking about the bathrooms that are in that section on the first floor? Right, or not?
There's only one set of bathrooms in the, in there.
On the first floor, right, in that building. When we have these large events, the public is not supposed to be using those bathrooms. They are, Jonathan Brown puts a sign on door usually, directing the public to go downstairs, because they have newer bathrooms, there's more of them. But the, the people that are working there should be able to use the bathrooms on the first floor. You don't want them going downstairs and being gone in repulsed if they're disturbing the public, you know, just like, or whatever. But that's the way they intend the bathrooms to be used, and I just wonder if that's being, I mean, I realize other, all these classes and all these people that come in and rent these spaces on the first and second floor are using those bathrooms. I'm not saying they don't need to be redone, but I think we need to think about who uses what. Those bathrooms aren't meant for the public, and they have hundreds and hundreds of people. I just wondered about that.
Based upon our discussion today and looking at the facilities that you're going to be including with Parks and Recreation, is there anywhere that we can maybe, uh, create a technical meeting to talk about Parks and Recreation facilities?
Certainly.
And just look at the need why, so that we don't teatmeal what we're doing, but we look at the big picture and make sure that we're, that's the road we want to go down.
And if we actually have. If we actually have a lot of the budget numbers coming together, um, for the two restrooms and, you know, um, we, we could certainly do that. You think until, when?
I think relatively soon. I know you've got these that are slated for the budget here, but I would say...
July?
July, that would be great.
You think till July now?
Now, looking at the informational electronic signs for city centers, is that the one that we approved with the, we do Evergreen Road?
Yes, that...
At that side?
That's, and that's the cities, there are other funds co, uh, coming from the feds and that.
Okay, and then Beechwood, where are we talking with that sign?
I'm sorry, oh...
Now, you've got the, you're gonna aim Beechwood Electronic Sign.
Yes.
So that's gonna be there?
Its final placement has not been determined. Uh, we, uh, as you come in off of Beech, some places put some thought to promote the Beechwood Center and, um, we'll bring the final, uh, sign configurations to council.
Okay, I was just wondering whether... Okay, I think we conclude this question by...
Thanks, Barry. Uh, next is, uh, roads and some questions have come up, uh, some of these, uh, we have Bridge Street Bridge Monitoring, annual obligation fifteen thousand. Traffic signals, there's some upgrades, uh, forty thousand. Traffic signal modernization eighty-five thousand. And then we have Evergreen Road, which we discussed. The, uh, streetlights on Civic Center, um, resurface eleven mile from Easter, five hundred thousand. Just to note, we are in an active dialogue with the AMDON and Machine Economic Development Corporation about securing an economic development grant to cover that amount. But we don't have that commitment, the projects aren't to bid. Uh, this is part of relocating, uh, BASF into one of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Towers. Uh, so we, we have that project, uh, it's moving forward, but we have a, a grant request. Nine Mile's been discussed, Northwestern, uh, Service Drive eight to nine mile's been touched on. Uh, reconstruction of Evergreen Roundabout's, uh...
Fred, you said the ASF, do you mean Federal Mogul?
Uh, Federal Mogul, thank you. We also, though, it's not on here, but we have a grant applications for eleven mile off of Franklin, eight hundred thousand to reconstruct that road, working with BASF on that road as well. So we have BASF on eleven mile off of Franklin and then Federal Mogul, twenty-three hundred feet of Easter. There the plan is, that road is so gone, so gone, they will put eight inches of gravel on it and asphalt over that, same thing we did on Easter Road. Okay? Isn't that this year? This, this year, starting August first. And a sign, uh, the sign has been made, it should be up real soon if it's not up now. Is he doing it? Thank you. Uh, water, uh, this is an annual expense, replacement of damaged residential meters, uh, water, uh, assessment of sewer and water utilities, a hundred thousand, um, if it, uh, uh, stormwater, a hundred thousand, upgrade standard carry pump stations, two hundred fifty thousand. Sewer cleaning and conditioning, uh, assessment, five hundred thousand. Commercial meters, uh, replacement, six hundred and fifty thousand. Replacement of obsolete reading system, uh, a hundred, one point five million. Replacement of water and sewer, uh, main lining, ten, ten to eleven mile. This is where the water department's helping out the water, the road project, one point six million. Citywide water system rehab, two point two million. Replacement of water and sewer lining, eight to nine mile, uh, three million, five hundred thousand. Citywide water and sewer main lining replacement, five million. Replacement of water mains in section thirteen, twenty-six, and thirty-four, um, is eight point nine million. Total for water and sewer is twenty-four million.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. And it's a cur, not a curiosity question, a real question. And that is where it says, replacement of water and sewer main lining. Is that taken, we've lined it one time, re-lined it one time, taken and output, new one in?
No, we are, well, there that is a new line, uh, along that stretch, uh, we're, so the existing line is being replaced and we're installing a new line.
Um, well, it sure, sure seems like it oughta come up. Some better way to describe that because to me...
Yeah, as you're saying that, we've lined it to it.
Yeah, looks like you're, if you're relining it, it looks like you're replacing...
We're not, we're not, this is part of the road project, this is a new, we're installing a new, new line. Um, so the word lining...
Replacement is in the wrong part of the sentence?
That's correct. And it should probably read installation of a new water main, installation of a new sewer line.
Okay, all right, I thought you were taking the, the relining out and putting a new one in.
Nope. It's, you know, the relining, when we're relining these sewer water lines, we extend the one, the net water main or the sewer lines light by another forty years.
Yeah.
So it's one of our biggest bangs and probably one of our best rates of return.
And I understand that. And what I thought was, now we're going in the second, I think it all went out, putting a new, relining.
These are, the old ones are being removed and the new ones...
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have another question, a little bit of land.
Yeah, in reference to water and sewer, do you have any anticipation of using the, uh, the water and sewer, the water department, financial assistance with that? All this?
Well, I don't know, uh, to do the financing, but if, you know, anytime we go into a neighborhood and we build the water mains and the sewers, the roads in that are left in substantially much better, uh, condition. You know, we often have to dig up a road to get to the water main. And I think of Pierce Road, uh, and I think Edwards, we did a stretch last summer, uh, the section off of Catalpa, uh, Greenfield and Southfield. Uh, when you, when you drive that area, those roads are in much better condition because of work done through the water department.
Well, that's not the question I asked. Are you going to use some of the fifty million dollars that the water department has from these projects?
To, to, oh, absolutely, yes, yes. I thought, I thought this was an earlier question when I, I apologize. Uh, I, the answer is yes, we will be using our fund balance to pay for this work.
Okay, that's a good question.
You know, other topics, um, I'm kind of, you know, I may just say that, that there's an evolution. Uh, the building department merits some, some discussion, a review of their, uh, their fees and that charge, how we staff and model that group. Uh, community relations cable, there's some dialogue going on. Um, I think I'm probably safe that, um, there's, there's some room to improve our messaging as a community. And are we fully utilizing the strength that we have in both of those groups as to what, uh, community relations cable can do? And then human services, um, human services, uh, we originally, when we built out the Simmons House, we had seven, eight people working there. I would like to evaluate that group, uh, and my, my present thought process is the ship intake function starts when a person's filling out an application for ship. The chore program moves over to the building and, and some point in the future to move our housing commission over there as well. Uh, so that one building would be fully occupied again and most of our social services would be operated from that building. The site is centrally located within the city, has good, uh, transportation routes and would create a little bit more activity within the Simmons property as well. Uh, but I'd like to, in the next six months, those three areas, I think, are areas of focus and opportunity. Uh, excess real estate, uh, the finance committee will be addressing, uh, real estate vacant mods tomorrow. Uh, but we've got, you know, for example, the Coe House. While I was in Mackinaw, had a conversation with the Better Business Bureau. Uh, you know, it's a concept of perhaps selling that property with a deed restriction. And I think we need to be thinking about, you know, these, this excess real estate has some carry cost. What, what is it that we can do? Uh, John Grace runs the facilities matrix, a hundred and eighty-four thousand a year. Yester received rent of about sixty thousand a year from the Career Center. Well, that means our Parks and Rec Department is subsidizing that building to between of a hundred and twenty thousand a year. And this strategy for a building like that may be a two, three year strategy, but I think we've gotta have it on our radar screen. The old fires, a house on nine mile, um, you know, we need to develop some type of game plan as to what we're going to do. Um, so, you know, I've thrown that in there, there are financial opportunities, um, you know, you know, I think with the Coe House, we have asked Parks and Rec, uh, on Monday night, you're gonna hear a presentation about historic designations. You know, maybe we start the process of putting that property in historic designation and we could also on sale write a deed restriction. I think there needs to be a dialogue about what happens with some of this real estate. Um, you know, for example, the Coe House within the facilities budget, it's, uh, the new roof is ten thousand dollars. Uh, in July, uh, I think we're bringing a council item on the Thompson Farmhouse, which will be an amendment to this budget, about fifty thousand for improvements to the Thompson Farmhouse to address some deteriorating situations there, so...
Fred, I'm, uh, talking about real estate and the Thompson House. Uh, under your, your funds, uh, Ray Thompson's house is two hundred and fifty-two thousand is named in that fund that belongs to the city. How is that accounted for?
That money sits in a trust and agency account. We've not received it yet. We should receive it at the end of June. Um, you're, you're speaking of the money that's currently held to the, in the Southfield Community Foundation.
Right, right.
We, we're, we're being told that we'll receive that after June thirtieth, um, and that money will sit in a trust and agency account.
So you're just talking about, of look for the, for the Thompson House, that money could be used for the maintenance of that?
And that's, uh, I forget the exact items in the council write-up, but those are the types of things we're talking about. The front porch, some repairs, some of the exterior stuff, um, and, and I think the roof is part of that and that would be charged to that fund. I think there's another item that needs to be discussed about those funds held in trust and agency. Uh, under the government accounting rules, we cannot put that money in anything that's producing a real rate of return. I think we need to find, come up with a creative way. There's a million plus dollars sitting in trust and agency accounts and we need to figure out how we can let that money produce a greater rate of, a better rate of return for the, to the city.
The pole fences that Inglewood, was that on the site plan for the expansion of the parking lot? I don't recall sitting that, seeing that on there. They put a farm fence pole, the whole length of, of that, it looks beautiful, but it's cut off, uh, you can't walk right through it. You gotta go to a gated area. I just never seen that fence on the site plan. I just wanted to know where that money came from.
Was that recently installed?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, there's, uh, it's like a match now.
Yeah, I call it a pole, pole fence.
Father not aware of it, uh...
Yeah, I, I just look at these site plans and I guess I, you know, when I go there and I see something else, I just, uh...
Okay.
Know how it got paid for. I mean, it looks beautiful, don't get me wrong. I mean, it's not a, it's not a negative, it's a positive, but I know it costs quite a bit of money. It goes the entire length of the park. Thank you.
Uh, Karen, you wanna pass out those org charts? And then, uh, I'm passing out a document that we're calling employee group status. This lists all of our bargaining groups, number of active employees. And then, uh, we had HR create a new document that breaks down, so I think it's interesting when you look at our collective bargaining agreements, that you'll have, you know, employees not working in, in one department, but in multiple departments. You know, I, uh, the one slide had proposed positions to be filled. I think there were some questions, um, the positions to be filled with those positions that are unfunded, but you'll see in the org chart, there still is the city's industry's position, deputies, those are still in the department. Financial Services Director has been added, um, the documents you have there on the org charts I want to really describe as, uh, it's an evolving document. Uh, as we went through, there are still some departments that have positions that have been vacant for a number of years and unfunded in the org charts. We've cleaned up some of them, but we're still going through and working our way through these documents.
Fred, we have, my excuse. Oh, is the, uh, in, in the, uh, the yellow, blue, whatever, unfunded, uh, portions, uh, how much money, how much money is needed, uh, I mean, how do we decide how much money is gonna be put in the budget for, for putting people in through the, when we go through those national chart? I mean, we're talking about a department in particular. You say, okay, we need a department head in that particular, uh, department. Uh, where are the funds to, to do that? There, there isn't funds set aside for it. When do we determine what department we're going to, uh, put, put some senior, uh, department heads into so that, you know, how we're gonna make the organization work the way we normally would? Uh, and, and how much is that gonna cost us for these things that have been all that? So that we get an idea of how much money we have in reserves, if there's any, I think it's two million in here, a million and a half? Something like that? Wait, um, in other words, when we talk about filling positions or, or reorganizing and putting people in positions, how are we dealing with that within this budget?
Well, we, we're filling, within this budget, we're filling the, the positions, um, that were previously on the screen, um, and, you know, for example, accounting. Those positions are a budget, and once I read in there that are being filled, that were unfunded, those have been accounted for.
Do we, do we have a sheet on that?
The, uh...
Do we have a sheet on that? Did you see what?
I think it's in the gray.
I'm gonna go ahead, sir. And growing in the org chart, we know we've got the cost and the grades and some of them.
In the org chart, the, we had them, but probably not in the org chart. Some, some departments put them in the org chart.
Are all in this, this, uh, budget?
All of these positions on this sheet are in the budget.
And funded.
And, and accounted for, yes.
Are there any positions, Fred, that you're looking at removing at all? Or re, uh, reassigning individuals in this?
I think, uh, the three areas that I explained... I think the three areas that I spoke about, Building Department, Cable, Community Relations and Human Services, could result in some realignment, reassignments.
That's the only one that's in time.
Pardon?
That's the only one that's in time. These here are the only ones that you're?
Yes, they're on, they're on our radar. There could probably be others in the future. And one of the things, in the organization, we need to get through this economic storm. We did everything through attrition. We've not gone in and realigned or redefined tasks to be performed. And, you know, are we still going to do something, or do we not? Can we better reassign people to utilize the staff that we have?
How do you want that discussion to get through? Because I, I know of one area that I think maybe some reassignment needs to be made.
Well, I, I guess, I guess I'd like to hear probably from council on what their thoughts are there. Candidly, because of the sensitivity of some of the collective bargaining agreement items, I would probably prefer to have those conversations in a one-on-one setting.
Okay.
And let the administration come to some type of consensus and present that to this body. And that was part of why I've given you this, you know, the Employee Group Status. And to begin looking, you know, we've got a lot of what happens in reassignment is covered and defined in collective bargaining agreements. Sue or Lori, you want to add anything?
Well, obviously, all of these contracts deal in one fashion or another with layoffs, bumping rates, reassignments, voluntary, involuntary, so depending upon the department and the employees, you know, obviously, there would be contractual provisions that we would need to consult.
I'll share with you. And my strategy would be to hear what council's thinking, a consensus, then engage the bargaining group with, you know, how we can structure something that works. At the end of the day, you know, we know we have fewer resources, and it is time for some realignment.
I'm going to state this again. Everything we do should be based on data, and there are audits, staffing audits. We can have our opinions, and you're very qualified being the administrator. But to give you an example, our Building Department, and I know you've already began this process, what is comparable cities? Because again, it's a budget issue. What are comparable cities? How do they staff? How are they, but also, what are the duties of the people who are left? And I think the, the good thing about us reducing as a result of attrition is that we do have to lay off, but we just pick holes out of organizations. And so people kind of assume responsibilities, but when you look at their job descriptions, is that their job description? And then when we look at it, are the jobs, are the duties still there? And so, and there?
And the skills.
And the skills. And so you have some people sitting in jobs that may not have the skills that's actually required for the job. And so, there's a point where we, as a, as a government, must be very confident of these, this is the organizational structure that we need to run our government. And this is, this is the cost to run it. And we still have Xs and Os, and people are there, there's, they're not there, but we can get help to get there. And I will tell you, if we do not get help in here to do this, this will be, two years from now, we'll still be on the same conversation. Because we will not have the staff here to stop and do this and do this justice. And I would like the council to really consider making this a priority, so that we will be able, at next budget cycle, to say, this is the government we need, this is the staff we need to run our government, and this is what it costs for our budget. And then we will have a clear picture, because we're talking about funded, unfunded, there's some gray areas there, so like councilman's a copy of that. Well, if you're putting a position in that's unfunded, what is the impact of that? And we don't have that statistically backed data or information that allows the council to say. Because what, you know, when you look at page eighteen on this packet, look at all the Xs on there, and so who's doing that?
And Madam Mayor, is one of the charts that I need to sit down with the department and reconcile with. Most of those positions, they're not funded. And that was, as we went through this exercise, we conducted two audits. We did an audit with the blue sheets, and it was amazing what people thought they had, what hasn't been in the budget for a couple of years, and what's being put in. And then when we got the org charts in the last week, we, we cleaned some of them up, but there's a lot more work. And the larger departments with a lot of the Xs, where we need to sit down, and we need, we need to clean those up. And then we're not even getting to your point, to getting to the task that needs to be done, because we're inheriting historical structures that aren't looking at tasks that need to be done. I, and I debated in using the word mirror and mimic in my letter, but so much of this is mimicking historical behavior, and it's time to rethink some of these. And I do believe the Building Department is a group that could make some substantial improvement, improve customer service as well as communication. It will be a major cultural shift, and we will need the collective bargaining group cooperation.
Because I will tell you, some of the secretary positions, that's kind of unheard of now in today's industry to have a secretary. You have an assistant, a secretary, the definition of the duties of a secretary, it just hardly doesn't even exist in today's corporate environment. And can we afford a secretary? Because so many of us write our own letters, we do all that as expected of you as a manager. I remember the first organizational shift, the second one, I guess, they took away my secretary, and I thought I was going back. Because I had, I could just send a memo, or just tell her to write, write the letter, and that just doesn't exist anymore. Everybody's expected to, once you put a computer on your desk, everyone's expected to do the work. So, that's what, Madam, Madam Chair, that if we ask the administration to come back to us, what would it, what would it look like? What would it cost to bring in the resources to give us actual audit of our city government, so that we'll know exactly what, because, you know, we need to know what it would cost to do that. And I think that's something that, so we can have an honest discussion enough. Thank you.
I didn't know the procedure here. I mean, are you done? Because I had a whole series of questions.
We're just, it's kind of free.
So I can go ahead. To expedite this, I hope this doesn't put anybody off, but...
Well, I think we want to stick with what's been shared so far, and then...
Well, I think I'm on that.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I'm on the blue sheet.
Are you ready for those right now?
Yep, yep, yeah. I mean, I just want to follow protocol, but to save time, I wrote out all my questions and my suggestions. So, I hope this doesn't put anybody off, but, and it's just, I thought for time-saving and debate, and some of my questions have already been answered, so, oh, I need a copy from Fred.
I'll keep some more of your tests, because you want it up there.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. And once everybody has a copy, um, Fred, while everybody's getting a copy, the dispatchers haven't been hired yet, and they retired over a year ago? Lori, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry?
The dispatchers, there's supposed to be two dispatchers, they have not been hired yet?
We, they've been in background, we made a job offer to one yesterday, the background just finished.
Does it take six months to get them up to speed?
Oh, it takes six months for them to go to testing in background.
And they've been vacant for a year, and we've paid overtime all this time? And I won't name the names, but I heard from some people in dispatch that they're getting burned out because they don't want to work seven days a week, or all that overtime. Parking enforcement, we're paying them? There are, I say, are there emergency managers and people, or are they just...
They've done the crew now, the crews that go out and do most of the...
Yeah, are they paid?
They are paid a kind of a minimum wage, and they, right, they're not career.
All right, so the NCTP is not...
Not career, part-time, correct.
All right, yes. So, anyhow, I always look at a budget, I agree with you, Fred, it's a living document, we, you know, we need to put a stake in the ground before July first, but we can always amend. I also feel that we're not broke. However, it always comes down to how, even if you had tons of money, how do you spend it? So, I, and from just one council person's view, I think we need to hire a Parks and Rec Director. I think we need a Public Works Director. You've already told us that the city, the deputy city administrator, there should be an administrator and a deputy, and you said that's in the budget, so we should hire that. Financial services, you've already said that, that's in the budget. I think we need another code officer.
Yes, you do.
We get so many complaints about codes. And just let me give you an example. Yesterday, you know, we're doing the garden walk on June twenty-second. This event is about showcasing a different neighborhood every year. People come, they've come from East Detroit, Commerce Township, Rochester, it's not just a Southfield event, it's a way of selling Southfield, selling neighborhoods. And so, I did a pass-through, this year it's Riverbank Neighborhood. There are houses in that neighborhood that look spectacular, and you know, that's one of our premier neighborhoods. And there are houses that the grass is eight, 10 inches high on the lawn. There are, there's a house that has trees that are dead in the front yard, that they've been dead so long, they're just spikes. We have a, we have a dead tree ordinance. How does this keep happening? A number of us got calls from Twickenham about the same thing, grass just out of control. I have a swimming pool, two houses from me that is green, with, and now the mosquitoes are out. How does this stuff keep happening? And I know, at an earlier conversation, Mr. Rikowski said we didn't need any more code officers. I think we do. And then the whole Building Department. You know, a year ago, we talked about a priority of rental property inspection. Nothing has happened, nothing. And then, then we amended an ordinance a couple of weeks ago to scoop up the money from deposits that, where people don't come back. We're not even policing the people that pull out permits. And they're, they're, they're just walking. I know from the houses I've renovated, that I had to dog some of the Building Department people to come out, because I wanted to make sure that everything I did was legal. Especially as a city councilman, I didn't want anybody saying, well, he got special treatment, or anything like that. I waited on the furnace inspection over six months. Something needs to be done there. So, I'm looking at maybe half a million dollars. But there are places that maybe we could take the money from. But, you know, I think I'd actually like to go to my last, you know, next to last And Fred, I appreciate all the information you've given us.
And it's still not, I don't care for the format.
Everybody knows that I have been frustrated. I worked budgets in my career, and I knew where every penny was. I have never felt that I know the city budget. And you have helped me tremendously, and I know you want to do more, you've already talked about that. But on question fifteen, all right, the proposed fourteen, fifteen budget indicates an increase in revenues of about one point one eight six million. Yet the expenditures are expected to rise by an equal amount. I don't know quite how that happens. What are the city's actual expenditures to be paid for this year? In doing a budget, you've got to know what you spent, and did you really need to allocate that much money to this department or that department? And we never get that feedback. We do not get that, that kind of feedback. So, increases are, I know that increases are noted in every general fund category, with the exceptions of public safety, streets and highways, which I can't understand why that's found, community development administration, and community relations. Only in council and transportation. And if you take last year's budget, and what's been proposed this year, and you go side by side, you'll see what I'm talking about. So, only councils and transportation budgets align for last year remain the same. So, can I get an explanation as to, I'm not aware of any raises that we're giving people. I know some people get a step improvement, but why, why is this? And where's the money, where's this one point one eight, one point two million dollars going in additional revenue?
How does that, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
How would that have to do with a continual increase in our retirement rate?
Okay.
Yeah, because of that and police and fire, and also the general fund continues to rise.
And what was the, for every dollar payroll last year, Karen, how much was going into pensions?
Well, no, for this year, I believe it's going to be less than fifty-four percent.
And that went up almost three cents for...
Three-dollar payroll, three, four cents.
For every dollar payroll. Pension and healthcare, what I call the backdoor car for every dollar payroll. And actually, we're preparing up a slide showing the historical cost, because if you look at where the city's has had, our employees have been great, but where our employee costs have gone up each for the last five years. Our pension contribution cost for every dollar payroll, in both police and fire pension and SERs, has gone up, as well as healthcare. The recent legislation the state passed, for the first time with the hard cap, gives us an element of a cost containment. But we still don't have cost containment in those pension costs and those legacy obligations.
Now, that takes an expression. We have a millage directed at, that covers police and fire pensions, so...
Side by side. That millage rate is going to go down a little bit next year, because we decreased next year's overtime budget in police and fire.
But it's a separate millage, it's not a general fund millage.
Right.
So, that, you know, public safety is a huge number of employees, probably coast to half.
So that's why the general budget, budget as a total has increased, even, you know, because the revenues have to increase in order to, to both the expenditure side with the police and fire pensions that you're referring to.
Yes.
And then also, we've also, because we've added those extra positions into the budget, that also rates the cost of some of those departments.
Sure. All right, let me, and I appreciate that, because, you know, you just don't know, you look at numbers from year to year, and, so, just starting at the top, the auto theft grant, are we, are we putting money into that?
Yes.
Karen does the report.
Fifty percent match.
Okay. Maybe that's, that's an area we ought to look at, and save, save a police officer for something else, if the grant's not totally covering it. Just a suggestion. I already talked about the rental inspections, and nothing, nothing changed. And we, gosh, we really need, and we have the rising rental homes in the city, where people are not selling their houses, they're renting them. Uh, and we, gosh, we really need, and we have the rising rental homes in the city where people are not selling their houses, they're renting them. Um, I, I don't think we're keeping up with it. I, I don't, I, I just don't see any evidence that we're keeping up with that. Um, and further, uh, when the treasurer has the property sale, um, these people take houses and bargain prices from the treasurer. And then next thing you know, I'm, and I've seen it in my neighborhoods, they're, they're for sale. Um, most likely without the vacant, uh, home inspection, uh, or any of the other policing that, that we passed an ordinance to do. Um, the, you know, I went to the hearing on the cable budget for the franchise renewal. And, and, uh, are any of the PEG funds going to be, uh, shared with public or private or charter schools? That's, that's what that money is for? Is that, is there any plan on that? I know, um, some of the school, they asked for some specific equipment things. I, we will...
Some were shared last fall, they, they did put in the grant.
I'm, I'm not aware of any.
They, we talked, um, earlier this year and they are going now through a review of what they need and equipment that they need and they said when they do that, they'll present their needs to us. We'll review that and then we'll give them the money accordingly.
Does that include the private schools, like Suffolk Christian for instance, used to do a lot in video?
We didn't talk to the private school, we talked to public. But I guess we go in...
But, you know, I, I, I'm sorry?
Charter, you look, talk to the public.
Yeah. Um, to my knowledge, the charter's not doing anything anymore in cable, but I know Suffolk Christian had done a lot. Um, alright, uh, number four. Um, I ran a print shop for years and again, using data and the change in printing with high-speed copiers, uh, it didn't make sense for us to have an in-house printing shop anymore. And I had three people in a print shop and couldn't afford it. Uh, it was cheaper to contract it. Uh, has some thought been given to that?
I, I can tell you, was, there has been some discussion, uh, we could pursue it if that's the desire of the body. And then again, I'm going to turn back to the comment about collective bargaining agreements and positions. Uh, if it isn't a possible area of, where there can be some restructuring issues.
Okay.
Well, that was one of the, uh, speakers that got brought up, that was one of the departments that I can go over to.
And, uh, you know, when, when I look at, um, you know, again, this is really instructive. Right, Fred, so thank you very much for, for doing this. Um, and Karen, whoever else is involved in this, but, uh, you, you look at these departments and no supervisors. So who, who's making these decisions? And it goes to the mayor's comments. And, and this is not about personalities or individuals, but, um, I also lived through this where, um, due to budget crunches, when people left, uh, other people have resumed duties and, and sometimes they really didn't have the leadership capability or the depth. Um, but they were a warm body. Um, and I, with, with the loss of so many people here, I know, I lived it. It, it's, it can be, um, it can be very, very critical, uh, to the effective operation of any organization. So I don't know who is, who's running central services now.
So, they, they report directly to print.
There has been some discussion though about realigning that, and we've talked about that just the last week.
Um, we, one of the things that came out of our strategic plan session last May and June was, uh, marketing and, and doing different marketing, improving marketing. And we had suggested, uh, a review panel be formed, an outside review panel. And there were a number of people who volunteered that they would not be paid, that they're professionals and they would just look at what we do. Um, nothing has happened with that. I still think it's a very viable, um, and it could be very valuable feedback from PR professionals. Um, I, I look at the, uh, the vacancies in the engineering department and I wonder with the scope of water, sewer and roadwork that needs to be done, do we have enough people there?
Um, I'm, I'm going to tell you, right now it's not our tent. We used to have six other engineers. Most cities are moving away from full-time engineering staff. We may, and even our plan review, uh, we are just, uh, we meet monthly with all five of our engineering groups. Um, the, the discussion and concern is, as the economy picks up, site plan review. And we are contracting more of that out and instead of the city subsidizing that cost, that cost is borne by the entities submitting the application and we're a product review. And that is becoming more than the standard across the state. Uh, we may come back though and want to add an engineer to wa, within the water department, at the water department under right there. There was some discussion about adding a person, one person, but I don't see us going back to the department of seven people.
And that's fine, um, as long as we're getting the job done and of course, we've all talked about quality and getting with limited money, getting the bank for our buck. Um, I think, uh, Bill Johns is doing a great job. He's very, very visible. I wasn't aware that his position was the point five, so this is just an information question. Uh, does he work full-time?
I think he's full-time. He's full-time, the other half is in the fire department.
Okay. And what does he do in the fire department?
He, he's...
Bill officially has the title of reserve coordinator.
Okay.
He assists the chief and for exis, for example, that fire we had on every, he assisted me for about eight hours as he used to clean up.
I, I just didn't know, and I'm not, not a criticism, just information. Uh, because, uh, I see him all the time, I know he's working. Uh, facilities maintenance, um, who's leading that department if this position needs to be filled? I mean, especially when you look at your capital list, it makes me wonder, how does this thing work?
We, we have a previous, previous director in a, coming in, in a part-time basis. Candidly, I think that this is an area that needs to be fully examined.
That is true.
Um, and, 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 and I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, but it's, it's an opportunity that we, we really need. It's a prime candidate for privatization. Um, and I, the, the, in the old days, Southfield had electrician, plumber, mechanic. We need a really good contracted administrator to come in and supervise the work that needs to be done. The level of staffing we have now isn't getting the job done. We're not using any modern reporting, uh, technology. And we've got enough property management companies in, in this community that we ought to be looking to them to help and, and take a different method. I think we could deliver the service for a whole lot less than we have in the past. And the fact that the position now needs an opportunity.
So are you going to act on that?
Uh, there's, there's already been a couple of meetings with some private management companies about that. Uh, again, that's one of those items, oh, and I do want to sit down and have an active conversation with the collective bargaining, uh, units that are currently in that group. This is a major cultural shift.
Mm-hmm. Um, Madam Chair, we have private conversations going on and...
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, um, there have been, uh, you know, for years, we've discussed this whole thing of separation of duties and SERs and, and HR. And, um, I really think that, uh, the HR director tells me that, that she's overloaded. Um, and, and she's also doing, uh, labor relations because that position is vacant. Um, well, I, you know, I, I think this is an area that needs to be addressed. The mayor has brought it up repeatedly, I don't know how many years. Um...
We, we can look at it. I can give you credit, the mayor and I spoke about this topic on Saturday afternoon, uh, in a, in a conversation. Um, I, 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 I will say this, I mean, one of the things we talked about during the study, but when you look at our HR department comparison to other comparable cities, we're still, we've still got a good sized department and, um...
But fewer employees.
But fewer e- employees. Um, I, I think we have one person being asked to carry a whole lot of water, um, from, in the SERs to some of the, the functions of an HR for P E Q evaluations and appraisals to labor negotiations. We've got one person who is doing an awful lot in that area and she probably needs a, a stronger assistant.
Um, we've talked about fifty-four human services. Not that there isn't a need, but other, other communities just don't have this department. Um, and they, uh, they contract services or they're covered by a, outside agency. I noticed on the blue sheet, it's about three hundred thousand, um, so, I mean, is this something that, that we should continue? I just raised the question, is this something that we should continue to do? Um, and, and then tied to that, HUD rules have changed now. The social worker funded by the nonprofit housing board can no longer be paid from housing fund. So, um, uh, the management company Lockwood, uh, says that their properties, they, they've secured grant money to pay for social workers. There's still the need for the social worker, but they get grants to pay for it and it doesn't come out of the rent. It doesn't come out of, of tax dollars. Um, is this, I'm sorry? Lockwood is the management company that has replaced, um, our, our onsite manager? Yeah, that's the three buildings. Um, so this is approximately a ninety thousand dollar position, I think the benefits. I don't know if it's still in the budget, but it is a problem how this, how this position's going to be funded when, um, uh, the way it's been funded is no longer permitted by HUD.
And I have to sit a second on this, Karen. The, this management company Lockwood, uh, received some, several calls from constituents, from people. They answer the phone McDonald's.
No, we're, I, I'm telling you, you gotta check into that. They're screwing around. Um, you can be afraid with it. So the motor pool, um, uh, again, this is another one of those departments that doesn't have a supervisor. And yet, the budget line for this department is humiliating. Makes me a little nervous. Um, I, I don't know how it's going to, um...
Laurie, that position's, is it posted now?
It's, well, we're just debating whether there's a CDL requirement or not, so it's tight, but hasn't gone out, up yet because of that, but...
There currently is a ninety-day rotation in the department supervision amongst the thirty-six, thirty-six group. Um, but we are nearing completing a job description and getting it posted.
Um, Laurie, I'll just tell you that I ran transportation in Suffolk schools and the, it had to be a CDL.
Oh, okay.
The director.
I, I think it should be a CDL.
It had to be?
Yeah, absolutely.
At least for school buses.
I, I think the question is just whether it's a CDL in six months or CDL at the time of hire, that's the debate right now.
Um, we've already really addressed, addressed public works, you mentioned that. And then, um, I, again, I think we need a PR, uh, rather, a Parks and Rec director and, um, uh, perhaps reducing a position is how you could pay for it within Parks and Rec because I know the budget is, uh, is strapped. And, um, I'm, uh, finally, I'm a huge advocate for getting rid of these vacant lots, particularly that we own. We're paying people to mow them or contract and we should just sell them and, and get them off our, and collect patricks hopefully out of them. It, it just doesn't make sense. And I, this is two years that I've been mentioning getting rid of surplus properties, so I, you're telling me it's going to...
It's on finance for tomorrow morning.
Okay. Um, could, could that list of properties be shared with the entire council?
Yeah.
I, I know you had a review once before, but we never saw it.
I've got a large twenty-four by thirty-six of it, you know, and I give the council one by seventeenth.
Alright, so those are, um, my concerns and the things that I would like to see happen there. But one person has to pay it here.
No. I just speak to everything that's sitting on the table, and I fully agree with everything that's said. And, but, you know, I talked to, to Fred throughout the, the year and especially since, uh, the last Jim and tried to bring him up to date as to some of the, the early, um, budgets that we had and tried to, uh, to insist in, in trying to, to come up with a budget for this year. I think that, I think that being said is, is right to say. Uh, however, because of the situation this year, I think that we're really trying to put something together that has been dismantled. And, and it is not anybody's fault, but you know, I looked at the gym on a regular basis and probably some of the others did too. But you know, uh, looking at, at, we lost about a billion, billion five in dollars since two thousand nine, you know? And, and, and we depended on an individual to keep this stuff out of an emergency manager takeover. And, and we dismantled the city at a cost. And, and you know, and I started looking at, at, with police and fire millage and, and, uh, and it went up from nine, four to thirteen, five. But then you talk about, uh, the pension, the pension, pension knowledge of police and fire, you know, that's went from, from a billion six to four, seven, a hundred seventy-nine percent increase. And that, that was sent to the taxpayers to pick up. Then you go back into SERs and that's only sixty-eight percent funded. And, and then you get into, uh, other funds at eighty-two percent funded. Uh, TV without authorities has dropped forty-one percent. You look at all these figures and data and, and you really have to sit back and, and admire the fact that we made it through since two thousand nine and, and kept things going. And the person on the street doesn't even know the difference. So when we bring up all this code, uh, problems and, and, and no directors in these departments, absolutely. And that's where we have to start getting back into a way a city really should be built as far as departments and getting it back into operating shape. Uh, but, you know, I don't know any other way that, that we could have made it through these few years without, uh, things that, decisions that were made by council administration. Um, and, and I know Fred and, and his staff, people are trying to get this thing, uh, done this year. Uh, and, you know, we had what, uh, our audit wasn't done on December thirty-first and we had to go right in the budget and, and, you know, since first of the year, we've been in a crisis state. And, you know, and as far as getting things done. Uh, and I think, I think that, I've been through all this stuff and, and you're absolutely right, Ken. There's, there's a lot of holes, there's a ton of holes. And there's a, a ways in which we can, can, uh, capture some more revenue. And, and you mentioned several of them. Uh, and you went on the list, but I think that's, that's where we really have to head from now through after this bunch of years. To start taking department by department, what was given to them, what was actual, what was the expenditures. You know, you always have revenue, actual, and, and that's what you're really talking about. We don't have what was actually spent.
Exactly.
And, and that's difficult. Um, I went back through also since, it's, I was, two thousand eight, looking at some of the figures and data and things. And that's what, you know, getting all these things that Jim gave me. Uh, you know, even, even some of our, our revolving funds, you know, where, where is that all set right now? How much money is there? And that's, I'm trying to be part of the, the, really council vision has to be aware of where our money is, how much do we have? So that we can start organizing, um, this city back and getting it back on track. And, um, so I, I just, I just think that, that we've done one heck of a job, uh, since two thousand nine. I think everybody really gave it all. I think that now according to what Jim, uh, Fred said, we kind of hit a level now where we're even maybe? I think that now, according to what Fred said, we kind of hit a level now where we're even maybe.
There's a degree of stability, there's plenty of areas to watch out. This is the time we need to reorganize and try to find better costs, better ways to provide the services we need to in the most cost-effective way.
The property values, you know, county went up approximately thirteen, twenty percent. So, you know, I'd say, you know, we can only capture whatever the five percent or whatever inflation is. But at the same time, you know, if we go one point three seven, and we go one point three seven, one point three seven, we'll eventually at least get up to that five. You know, we run a new assessor, and I think that we can start being able to get these percentages up.
Well, that legislation passed through Lansing, WTTW is going to govern it all.
Yeah.
Hopefully, moving forward.
But what I'm actually saying, and I'm going to cut my tail short, is that now is the time to take everybody's input, and let's get this shit straightened out and get it functioning like the city should. And I just, like I said, at the same time, I want to give credit to, you know, everybody, the staff and the administration for the time that they've put us through this emergency, you know, fifteen years now, it's been difficult. And I know we paid for it, we paid for it dearly by maybe spending more money than we should if we had directors in each department. There's no way of knowing, but at the same time, you know, because, and I'll say that, directors, you know, have an education to take care of and manage their department. And not only that, but have vision as to what they can do in their department to save money, to expand it, to cater to the community more. I mean, because that's what they're trained to do, and we're lacking that in a lot of departments.
And I agree with you. Anything I've said is not a criticism.
No, I understand that, bro. I agree with everything you said.
And we did what we had to do, but I think we're at a point now where we need to change the thing.
These home rentals battered me crazy, because every time I called Jerry, and Jerry was going to get me a list of foreclosures before he went away. But, you know, he's fighting with this every day. And, I mean, and so is code fighting with this every day. And, yeah, maybe we need more help, you know, to pick up the slack for a while, but, you know, we went to seven days. And, but, just yesterday, I got a lady, he called me from Longcrest, that somebody's got a natural landscaping or something, and dropped a bunch of bales of hay in the driveway. But, you know, I had to call Jerry down in Florida. But anyway, they, but then, you know, you give them a ticket, and the people don't respond. You know, I told a guy that's blowing grass in the middle of the street, you know, a landscaping company, and I said, hey, you gotta pick that stuff up off the street, it goes into our sewer. You guys know who you think you are? I said, well, I'll tell you who I am. He says, it don't bother me. You know, and...
Did he ever like them?
Well, I was going to get her, I went up to the lady, she didn't want to give it to me. I wanted his name and company, but she would give it to me. So, but anyway, but so, code's got a heck of a job out there. People are sloppy, people throw these up the street. You know, you have a different kind of, you know, group that just wants to throw their Farmer Jack stuff home, not Farmer Jack, but handing papers all over everything with the mustard and ketchup.
I'll take them up every day.
Yeah. But, anyway, I just, I just want to tell Mr. Chairman that, that I just want to, you know, say that, at the same time, I want to champion the people who got us to this point, because I also want to say we got a heck of a challenge ahead of us.
To add on to what Mr. Percassi and Mr. Cyrus said, I agree with, I agree with everything that's been said. But I also think that we need to look forward. And I'm going to make some folks maybe in the room, maybe some folks happy, some folks not happy with me. But I think we need to put some more money in economic development, because I think we have enough dollar stores. I think we have enough nail salons. And I think, and Mr. Percassi brought this up a meeting or two ago, about years ago, when stores weren't up to par, that a group of the city people went out and said, clean this place up or get out of town. And I go into one of the grocery stores here that's in Southfield, and I also go to the same grocery store in another community, and they don't even look alike. And that tells folks, that's a standard that people, that people see when they come to town. And if they drive into town and all they see are nail salons and dollar stores, that sends a message to folks that may be looking for homes. So, I think we need to put some more money in economic development to attract the kind of businesses that Jim always said, we're going to lead the turnaround of Oakland County. And if we're going to be the engine that turns Oakland County around, we've got to have the product that does that. And I don't know how we do it, but we need to get the people that know how to do it. Because we've got buildings that people can move into, that bring the right kind of businesses in that will put us in the turnaround mode, in the positive way. So, but I agree with how we got to where we are. We all voted, raised our hand and said, let's take that, let's take that path. But now it's a new day. So, we need to, we need to look in both directions.
Can I just comment on the retail? Both Shelley Freeman and Al, the city, that's from our DPA, were in Las Vegas. In Las Vegas, I know they met with a corporate entity called The Retail Coach. And I think that within the next month, they'll be bringing something to the Economic Development Committee about the services of the Retail Coach working with us.
Good.
And during that meeting, both Shelley and Al will be providing a briefing of what happened in Vegas, meeting with different retailers, mall owners. There were some bright spots and then some concerning spots as well. But I thought The Retail Coach was one of the best takeaways, and we spoke about, a little bit about it last week. They just got back, like, ten days ago. So, you'll see something on that.
Okay.
Yeah. If this conversation is winding down, I definitely want to commend Fred and staff for making sure that, you know, we're in the shape that we're in, and that the information presented to us is really just presented in a way I haven't seen in the last three years. But one thing that we really, the seven of us have to tackle is, in this budget, we have budgeted for an administrator, and we have budgeted for a deputy administrator. And we need some sort of vision of where we're going with that. And I don't know if this engages in a whole long discussion for this meeting, or if we really need to set a date where we figure out. We have, and I'm in favor of as soon as possible, because, you know, people need, we need, we need a city administrator in the city. And we need to figure out the process to get that.
We need two people.
We need two people. Yeah, we need to search for, we need a city administrator, and we need a deputy city administrator, whoever they may be.
Yeah, for six months, it's running out.
Exactly.
We did it for six months, it's running out.
That's right. So, I suggest we all look at our calendars soon, so we can find a date to have that long discussion about how we go forward.
I have a question, and I really would like an answer to this. If we let go of all the people who retired and never cleaned their desk off, could this city run? The answer is absolutely not.
Repeat that again. Fred, then, repeat that.
To give an example, the people there in Parks and Rec who retired and then came right back. The people in Human Resources who retired and came right back. The people who are in Public Works and everywhere else in the city. And I think that's a wrong notion that we have in this city with staff. So, if we let go of everyone who was actually on our roads and retiring to this city function? And is this a model we're going to continue? And we need to have that when you talk about it, because I can tell you, Human Services has people working like we never left. Parks and Rec does. You know, you have people down in Central Services, you have people over in the facility.
Building department, or library too, part timers.
You know, so, we have...
If you don't hire a payroll specialist, you probably wouldn't have a rest to get paid. Without the person that was retired coming back.
So, Don, I want you to hear this, just like he just said, that our payroll is dependent on someone who's retired.
If we wouldn't have cross-trained to have them cross-train us, because of that vertical lot, we would have been hard-pressed to get everything.
And that, to me, is a huge issue in this city. We have created a culture that you retire and come back and keep doing the same job. So, they're not even held accountable to the standards or to the job description, and we keep them there. And so, what are we doing here? Are we actually having a workforce that we are sustaining? Because where does that impact our general fund?
I think the impact is huge. It helps the general fund. I, it dismays me to...
It helps the general fund, but it's a cultural issue that here in the city, we're going to have to address.
I don't disagree with the cultural issue, but let me, and I'll use for example...
Because when they decide not to...
The Affordable Healthcare Act. These people, at least coming back part-time, have healthcare. There is, our part-time workforce, non-career, is a substantial number. Laurie, do you know the number?
It varies because of seasonals and part-time, but it's two hundred. I mean, there's, you know, nose counts, there's at least two hundred.
There are certain obligations, how many hours these people can work, if they work over a certain hours, the city will be facing penalties under the Affordable Healthcare Act. And the non-career, and I agree, the culture's wrong. I mean, that someone shouldn't leave, but there is a savings because of...
So, that gets back to what Don has said. Are we at the point now that we really need to have the expectation that we have hired employees, that we can hold accountable, that we can train, train innovation, naturalized technology to our city? Because when you don't do that, then we become behind when it comes to being competitive. We are not embracing new initiatives and technologies. We're just keeping the boat afloat, and we did a good job of that. And we need to be commended for that. And that model worked at that time. But it's now that we are now getting revenue, the city is recovering, that should not be... And I want to know, how many of those do we actually have? You know, and maybe we don't need to know that. But we need to move forward with the expectation of hiring people, holding them accountable, innovation. I don't, I don't hear that ever mentioned when we're talking about, who's driving the innovation of our city? To say that we are going to use new innovation and technology to make us more efficient, to reduce costs, to be a partner when we're doing our staffing? Where do we raise the bar? And if that, that culture, I think, of just keeping it afloat, we have to do that. But, you know, I'm with Don. Now is the time to say thank you to everybody, but we've got to move forward with this thing.
We can certainly move forward and prepare that cost. We will also go through, if we were to hire people under our existing contracts, what we would be looking at. I mean, the fringe benefit cost and the wage, it's a substantial number.
So, that goes back to my question. What do we need to run our city? Is it fair for us to continue to do a budget counting on people retiring and staying here? And that's how we're going to sustain ourselves? Is that, is that a fair expectation for us as elected officials to say, this is a budget, but because we have this niche here? Because these people will eventually get hired and go home. So, what we're going to do, ask other people to retire so that we can continue this model? I don't know how long we can even sustain them.
Mr. Vance, could you have a question?
I'm just wondering whether I should ask it. All right, I will. We have an acting administrator who is the most qualified person I think we could ever find. What is the problem of wanting to make search, spend money, and interview ten people for the administrative job like Moss wants to do or Ken wants to do?
We're going to set...
That I want to do?
But we're going to set a meeting...
We'll have to find a deputy anyway.
It could be the deputy.
We'll have to find a deputy anyway.
Yes.
We will set a meeting within the next thirty days or less to discuss our city administrator's position and...
I'm a little bit wary of the motive.
Fred needs some help. Fred can't help himself.
I'm not talking against a deputy.
No, Fred needs, that's all, we're talking about...
No, he's talking about administering too.
I talked about a deputy.
Only a deputy.
I said make sure both positions are funded in the budget.
Okay.
And they are.
All right, okay.
Let me turn you on what the mayor stated. What we have done to ourselves since two thousand nine is to put Band-Aids on everything that we could to stay alive. And what, when I say that, dismantled the city, in dismantling it, we did bring back people who had experience to keep their department going, and then, in addition to the department, they were working on spreading out to do help other people. The optimum would really be to go back to where we really should, and that's running a company that has a director that can run his department or her department, can have vision on where that department should go, and to set the work programs according to what has to be done, and to be accountable for the job that they do. And what we have done is, we kind of messed up, I'll say I did, because I supported the way we were going the last few years. But at the same time, we, getting back to having a director of a department being accountable will save us money irrespective of the fringe packages and everything else, because their job will actually be to get their department going in a financially sound way. And be accountable as well as do it to the administrator or whatever department they have to be accountable to. But it, that's what I believe, and going down to see the list that Ken has here, and is absolutely right, you know? When you have a trained, experienced, educated person in that whatever educational background, and they...
Don't have.
And I'm using that because it's the first one I know that's true. But, you know, they have certain vision on how that department should go, how it adjusts the community, and see what they have, and actually, do what Fred is trying to do, they would hand them how their department should be organized then. Instead of Fred trying to look at the department and set it up, you get this person saying, this is what we have to get done, and this is your job to get it done, go to work, and you're accountable to me that it's done. And I think, there, that's actually what you're saying, so the words. And I think the sooner we get back to that, and everybody, I hope you agree on that, is that... But I have to, you know, what, how much dollars are we talking about to get there? And how long is it going to take us to get there? But the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I think we need to recognize, you may never be able to get there.
But you can make the attempt to get there.
You can make the attempt, but you've got Proposal A and Headway capping your growth. As long as your pension obligations and your healthcare costs continue to rise, you're not always going to be able to have employees you haven't had raises in six, seven years. That's not always going to be your model. You know, so, I think part of it is, we're not, I don't see the city going back to the size it was. It's just not going to happen.
Well, it's not to the size, it's not to the size, but it's the direction that a department head can lead you so that he knows, he knows the job that has to get done, and he also knows what are the limitations of the city are, and try to make choices that you can accomplish a lot of things. And I go back, you know, we need to get this field, to go back in history, we need to get some grass cut. We stole a tractor from Oak Park. Keep it. And, you know, so, I mean, I mean, I don't mean we should go steal things, but...
And to the point, when you look at, you look at the organization...
Back in those days, you know, everything was open.
If you look at the organizational charts the department gave us, some of them were the old days. They were going, they looked like it was two thousand and five, two thousand and six. And it showed the disconnect between the reality of the situation we're facing, and their basic inability to recognize that the basic structure to deliver the service needs to be changed.
Yeah, I was at the regional, uh, Chamber of Commerce over the weekend in Texas, the assistant there, and, you know, uh, I'm glad we rejoined them and got involved with them, and they've talked highly of Shelly. Uh, I think that, uh, that they have a strong influence in seeing that a city gets some business people, and, you know, when you're talking about Proposal A, that new construction is where it's going, and that's gonna save us. We've got a lot of empty space here, we've got a lot of redevelopment space, and, uh, we can capture a lot, you know? Uh, not to mention St. Beach is down to the ground now.
Down.
Levelled, and, uh, and, uh, and it's on its way, and, you know, that's, that's everything else, you know? I think things are gonna happen here because, because we're a unique city, and location and all those things that we say that makes Southfield are real, and they just don't go away, they're out here permanent. So it's a matter of things going my way for a while.
Any other questions? Um, so to recap, um, Mr. Zorn, it looks like you've heard a consensus again, if it's not a political consensus, that we need moving forward, um, to look at, the vacant home and rental, so, here, how is there, just by any objection. Definitely much.
We have an all vacation, we have, um, all.
We have, we have, unless vacant.
It's not being done.
Yeah, in the middle section. Um, also, it seems as if without any, uh, our positions, we kinda need a organizational, uh, overview of where we are, I'm not gonna say audit, but just a overview of where we are personnel-wise and, you know, which positions, who do what, and who do what.
We, we will complete the organizational charts as they are, per what is being funded, as a cleanup, and, uh, and we will reconcile with those departments that gave us departments and charts that show positions that haven't been filled for four or five years.
And I think the other department will come on an add-deep basis.
You know, Fred, I would like to, you know, keep being in mind, but I said, in, in looking at some of the department heads, uh, I don't know what the uncommitted balance that we have is, but I'd also like to know if we, if we, and I'm not talking about tomorrow, do it, I'm talking about if we can start moving in that direction of starting hiring some directors, I know it takes time to advertise and interview and all that, but to bring some people aboard, start bringing them aboard, and, and, but I'd like to know how much it's gonna cost us, that, that's the biggest thing, so that we know how much it's gonna cost 'cause we know how to plan going forward.
Right.
Well, you know, Ken just hit the list, it's the partial list, but I mean, but I think he hit it pretty much on the, on, on the head. Partial recreation, public works, deputy city administrator, financial service. This is Ken's.
This is yours?
Yeah.
Oh, you did this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I explained that I, made the conversation go faster.
Yeah.
I just put my thoughts down.
This is from you.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Scott, but.
But it's the same, that if we start, and, you know, Fred, I'm not saying you'll get it done tomorrow, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it, you know? But, but we gotta start planning, you know, set a timetable for what we can do and when we can do it.
Well, I'd add to that, Don, it just, just, if we do these things and we don't have more money, then what, what can we take away? And, and again, I've made some suggestions, maybe other people have suggestions, but.
Make choices.
Yeah, but I wanna say, in regards to parts and recreation, I'm not interested in putting a director in that position until we've totally looked at all the other funded positions and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Because I don't wanna put somebody in there, you've got other people that are not performing their job, um, that department needs to be like that.
And this is a discussion, and, you know, I, I wanna push this to the city administrators. What is the vision? Because there's a philosophy that you hire a director, then allow them, empower them to look at their department and say, this is what we need to do. Because without a director, that person, who's gonna, who's gonna do that recommendation? But that acting person, but when you have selected a person with a skill set to actually run the unit, then they can come back and make a recommendation, Fred, and he can make the recommendation, and we can hold that out.
That's the idea of the world.
Yeah, but when you don't have a director, it's really hard to, to restructure a department, because who's doing?
Most, most of it's being done, and, and what's happened today has been in response to the economic crisis. I'm aware of four city managers who've retired in the last year from Michigan cities for one reason, and they will tell you, I think the former East Point City man just said it very well, I spent my thirty-five-year career building the city, I wasn't prepared to start taking and dismantling departments and removing things because we can no longer afford them. It's a different mindset that has to go through. In an ideal world, you do empower a manager to build and create, but given the financial constraints that we have felt, you know, forty percent reduction.
Well, they might reduce too.
Right, but a lot of people are geared psychologically for the dismantling, and, and even with our own management group, the fact that we got the same existing organizational charts is, is a testimony to that, so, um, and I, I think I, I need to say something about my role in acting. Um, I would appreciate the position being acted on sooner than later. Um, I think it's important, if this body wants certain things, that whoever he or she is in, in that position, that they're in the position, because the types of changes you were talking about are so wholesale that that person's gonna need to be firmly put in. You were talking about things that are gonna be culturally upsetting to the organization, and, you know, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll say, it's building department. I have a proposal that would involve privatizing the top management of our building department. I would like to act on that, but that is gonna be such a radical change for this city. And our, the productivity, the use of technology, all the things you folks have been talking about, we're not gonna get there doing things the way we always have. It's time to be more thought-provoking and looking at what some of our neighboring cities are doing in order to get there. You know, the proposal's been on my desk for forty-five days, I have the company coming in on, on June ninth, um, you know, I will move that, that item forward, um, but whoever the person is, needs to be firmly planted when you start undertaking those types of activities.
Yeah, I just, um, this list of, uh, everybody's names, Ken, I did not realize it was, I don't know when that was said, but I think if somebody other than the city administrator or staff is preparing something, I think, and they won't know it by now, um, so we know where it comes from, because I was kind of assuming it didn't sound like it came from the city administrator, but it looked like it did. So I think it would be helpful, well, it would be helpful to know what became.
I know. Yeah. When he says that, he's voted. We all know.
Everyone I like.
Or something, it should've been, sure that.
And I read it, so Fred was not reading my document.
I got anything else.
I appreciate you.
I mean, what's wrong with that? Keep talking.
All right. Anything else?
Goodbye from here, Matt.
All right, I think you're done. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda, I believe, is communication. And, yes. And the first person, you can't draw the three minutes.
This is okay? Is it good? Yes. Let me know when you guys are ready and, uh, the tingle talk is done. My name is Pamela Jarrow, P O Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. For the residents that are listening to this meeting via YouTube, I can be reached at two four eight three four six zero four three nine. As your independent voice, I will always be, only a phone call away. Members of this council seem to hold high value to residency in order to speak before this body. According to P A two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, the Open Meetings Act, Section Three, Subsection Five, and I'll quote, "A person shall be permitted to address a meeting of a public body," unquote. This public act does not say if you live in a particular city, county, state, or even another country. This council would be considered intellectually bankrupt if you attempt in any way to prevent a non-resident from addressing this public body despite the law. The acting city administrator, Mr. Fred Zorn, lives in Lincoln Park, Michigan. How can members of this council look down on non-residents that speak before you and yet hire a non-resident to run this city? And I just wanna add for the record that you guys seem to be so proud of the fact that you haven't had to lay people off, that you've lost people through attrition. People left out of here because of the lack of leadership, they left out of here because of the bureaucracy and the politics. And for Mr. Frazier, Mr. Cyberg, and Mr. Moss, you know, I am just like totally falling in love with you guys, with the honesty and things that you've said before this table and in these last several meetings. This city needs to, uh, hire Josh Linkner to come in, he's the author of Discipline Dreaming. I've mentioned, uh, his book before, I also interviewed him on my talk show, What Matters, and he basically talks about innovation and creativity even in a city municipality. Consider Josh Linkner, the author of Discipline Dreaming. And thank you three councilmen for all that you do. And for Mr. Zorn, I was happy that you listed, uh, several departments that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, and you guys have also heard me say that over the years. So when you reorganize, when you become the city administrator, make sure you put the citizens at the top of those charts again. Thank you.
All right, the next person is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
My address is Post Office Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. This afternoon, I'd like to ask this council a question about your published agendas for regular televised council meetings. To be precise, the reoccurring parenthetical sentence that follows the boldface type announcing the consent agenda, that states, and I quote, "Any item on the consent agenda will be removed for discussion upon the request of a council member, the mayor, or a member of the public," unquote. I'm interested in the phrase, quote, "or a member of the public," unquote. If this be the case, then why doesn't the chair invite the public to speak up like at a public meeting? If you recall, at the last televised council meeting on May nineteenth, Fred Bunker invited himself to speak up on the consent agenda, and he was quickly rebuffed by the chair. So now I'm asking this council, what do you mean when you say, quote, "or a member of the public," unquote? A related question might be, is Fred Bunker a member of the public? Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
If you've sent an individual, Andre Patton, that is asked to address the council, he has three minutes, and normally you do have to put a formal request into our court office or in state court, but I will with Malachus today.
Thank you, Madam President.
And you have to give us your name and your address for the record.
Hello, left council members, um, my name is Andre Patton, my address is two eight one 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 Blentwood, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero seven six. I've resigned, visited, resided there, been a homeowner for thirteen years. My home, of course, is on your website, the before, not the after. A lot of work in my home, care about my city. Um, Councilwoman Seaver, I'm proud of you, I'm proud of you as a council member, Jeremy Moss, and the body, I'm proud of you guys, but specifically the three that spoke up today, kudos, because if we do not get back to caring about this city as a whole, it's going to fail. I don't wanna see that, I believe that you don't wanna see that. There are so many residential areas that are left by the wayside, it's unbelievable. From the rental homes to the homes that are not being cut, from the, the lack of care, from the mindset that we have gotten from, this would, this will be, this is a beautiful city, but I'm starting to see it fade. I'm seeing it fade before my very eyes. I don't know if you, you're looking at it as a, as a whole picture, I mean, yeah, you look outside, it's beautiful here, but come to our area, go to some of the areas, go to some of the other residential areas, it's fading. Code enforcement needs more help, they need more bodies, you need people that genuinely care about the residents and these homes. We can't just put in economic development, we gotta work with the mindset in these residential areas, these people that have gotten these rental homes that have a renter's mentality, and I heard that, like, what does that mean? What is a, if you live somewhere, you have an obligation to take care of where you live. I don't care if you live, if you own it or not, but if it's not being enforced, if it's, if no one is being held accountable, then what do we have? We have a crumbling infrastructure, and we gotta get back to caring. I like to quote a song Marvin Gaye made a long time ago, "Who Really Cares?" It's not about just having a job and a job title, it's about genuinely caring about what you do and where you are. We've gotten away from that, some people have, I won't say collectively everyone, but when you have a certain amount of individuals that, that has gotten away from what really matters, we're gonna continuously have these problems. We gotta get back to the basics. I don't know if a lot of people care about what I'm saying, but it's, it's real, we see it every day. Eight Mile, Lotter, you come down, heading north, it looks really bad.
You have ten seconds left.
Eight Mile, Evergreen too. Let's get back to the basics. I love you all, thank you for everything.
Thank you for your comments, but preaching to the choir, we all believe that, council is very, very important, and everywhere we're here, we're trying, we're trying to do what it takes to keep Southfield.
But as a citizen, I need to be heard too.
Yeah, I, I'm saying, we heard you.
Yeah, I'm, you know, and I care, I know you guys care.
So thank you very much.
But, you know, I appreciate you guys, I, I voted for all of you.
Okay. Are there any other items that need brought to this agenda? Okay, ten numbers.